Good evening. Welcome to the Manistee City Council. Today is Tuesday, March 1st, 2022. Please rise for the
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, will you please take the roll?
Mayor Beaton.
Here.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Here.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Here.
Sorry. Councilmember Shemansky.
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Planning and zoning administrator.
Here.
Detective sergeant.
Here.
Fire chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Roll call complete.
Thank you, Heather. Public hearings, we have none. Citizens, comments on agenda-related items. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on agenda-related items only. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments, limited to five minutes. Letters will not be submitted to council. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Do we have any citizens who would like to come forward? Seeing none, we'll move on. Consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, cash balances, revenues and expenses, notification regarding next study session, consideration of ordinance 22-01 to amend the City of Manistee codified ordinances to add Chapter 275 Neighborhood Restoration and Beautification Commission, consideration of tax amendments to the zoning ordinance, adding language addressing views yet, consideration of tax amendments to the zoning ordinance, adding language addressing storm sewer and lot coverage. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Heather, could you please take the roll?
I'd like the one, uh, be removed for now.
What do you mean by removed?
Well, move it into a different, uh, I'd like to talk about the one, uh, A.
Beautification, honey. Which one? Restoration, beautification?
Neighborhood restoration and beautification.
Well, we can, we can move it, we can add it to the agenda, and then we can discuss it.
Yep.
So where would we like to add that?
It's already unfinished.
Okay.
It's the way we've always intended it, yeah, to amend.
So we're gonna move that to... It's right there. Okay. All right, just try this again.
So we just...
We're going to move consideration of ordinance 22-01 to amend the City of Manistee codified ordinances to add Chapter 275 Neighborhood Restoration and Beautification Commission.
Ready for roll?
Yep.
Okay. Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Us.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
All right, unfinished business. Consideration of ordinance 22-01 to amend the City of Manistee codified ordinances to add Chapter 275 Neighborhood Restoration and Beautification Commission. As an ordinance, two separate readings are required. This ordinance was introduced at February 15th, 2002 meeting, and can be adopted at this time. At this time, the council could take action to adopt ordinance 22-01 amending the City of Manistee codified ordinances to add Chapter 275 Neighborhood Restoration and Beautification Commission. Any discussion?
Yes.
You need a motion. Motion. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Okay. On this membership, I think we have a hard time finding people because when we tried to set up the blight committee, we asked for a person from each, each, uh, area, and we got them only by luck and a draw, but, uh, people dropped out pretty quick. How are we gonna find four people now? Do we advertise for them, or what are we gonna do?
So we did kind of a pre-advertising. I know, assuming it passes tonight, it would be advertised in the paper, clerk would put that in there, and actually, we've received, I think, is it four applications?
I think we have four or five now, actually, already.
So we'll open it up even more, and then I think we'll bring back them to council on the first April meeting for appointment, and we'll give some time to get some more applications.
Okay. Are we gonna be looking for somebody from the local service clubs like we have in here?
Yes, and I think, um, yeah, I think the JCs are gonna be notified. Mr. Saylor knows of one, so I think we're word of mouth, we're hoping to get the word out that we're still looking for some service members, service club members of the committee.
Now, what I'd like to know is, it doesn't say anything about if we find something and we, the group, bring it to the police department, are they gonna issue the tickets like we had before?
So the plan is to have the police chief be the liaison for the committee, and obviously, any, any issues or concerns can be brought to him. The hope was with this commission, it would be more of a, kind of helping facilitate volunteer activities to address blight as well, but there'll still be that enforcement aspect through the police department.
Okay. Well, I'm kinda concerned because we have a lot of blight, and I've told people about this, and nothing's been done, and what's the sense of having ordinance if we're not gonna enforce it? So, I mean, we have junk all over the street sitting that I've had to bring forward to different people, and finally, after months, it got taken care of. Now we have more junk that I'm finding, and I mean, I shouldn't have to run around, this should be done by the people who are given the job to do that. And, you know, I mean, I have to find lights out, I have to find, I mean, this is crazy. I did it for 51 years. I don't understand why it can't be done now.
So I know the police department does have the blight districts, we had kind of a meeting, myself, the city attorney, police chief Glass, about kind of adding capacity so that we have contractors that can do work if things aren't being done, so we're kind of gearing up for blight season. But I think this commission is a good step in the right direction as well, but there are other things we need to be doing.
Well, I know that I'm the one that started this whole thing yelling years ago about blight, and finally, we got to this point. Do you think we should have something in this ordinance that says the police are gonna continue with it?
I think this is kind of a complementary, I mean, we still have the enforcement aspect, this is kind of more of a, we have the national, we have the day of service, we have a list of, they're gonna maintain a list of volunteers, so I think we're still gonna have that, and that area is still, like I said, we're addressing, kind of adding capacity to do the work if it's not being done, and then do some sort of cost recovery with it. So that's still being worked on, this is just, this is another way to address blight. They're more of a, kind of a service club group, and it's just another way to deal with it as well.
Because, I mean, we were told before, well, people can call in and on the city, uh...
Website.
Website, and they can leave messages, and you're gonna find that, people don't wanna report on the people, so that's why I think we have to, the police department, has to do that.
And I think we've been, we talked about kind of getting a notice out beginning of April, that they're gonna be going around looking for blight and kind of issuing kind of a spring cleanup notice, and letting people know that they'll be cited if there's blight, and this is the kind of thing we're looking for.
A lot of the guys did a good job, they cleaned up a lot of jungle, you know, since, since we all started, so I'm happy for that, but I just wanted to make sure this stuff was in there so that we don't have to go through this all again. Thank you.
Can I ask a question about that? It says, maintain a volunteer list. What will the volunteers do? Look for blight, or what, what exactly would they be doing?
I think the idea was kind of a neighborhood cleanup or an activity, if it was decided on a certain project to do to help, uh, just kind of someone who was elderly who couldn't clean up certain areas, so that was the idea behind it, and just to have that list of volunteers to be ready if, to mobilize when help's needed.
Right. Like Manistee Proud, or whatever that was, that was doing a lot of work on the, is that, is that something that they would work with them on things, or maybe, or?
Possibly, I think probably there's similar volunteers, maybe they'd be on both lists, but I think, I know they just kind of specified that they were working on the River Walk, this would just kind of be anyone who wanted to help, kind of do a neighborhood cleanup, so...
Probably gonna get some volunteers from the leadership, uh, team, because they've been working together for almost a year, and they're always, they're looking for service projects, so this is gonna be a nice way for them to continue their service.
And so they, then, this committee will be working directly with the police department? Is that right? Or they report to, or how does, like, who oversees them?
So we'll have a staff liaison, I think we kind of want the commission to, or the commit, yeah, the commission to work and figure out their goals and kind of evolve, but the idea was that we kind of have blight issues, and then I think there'd be some aspects of the city attorneys involved in with the enforcement, and there'd probably be some blight issues where this, this group maybe offers some volunteer help. That was the idea, at least.
My other question was, um, so there's the part of beautification, so is that really more blight sighting and cleaning up blight versus doing something to enhance an area? Or could that be under it, just depending on what they decide to do?
Possibly, yeah, I think it was more for cleanup, but I mean, they could take the beautification aspect and, and go with planting flowers or something like that, but I think once we get the committee, we'll be able to work with them and see what they're, what they'd like to do with, with their tasks.
I'm glad to hear that we've got four or so applicants, so that's exciting.
Anybody else? You look like you were gonna say something. I am, but I can't talk, so... Fortunately for everybody here.
This is just additional to what we have been doing, correct?
Correct.
We're not taking away of anything else.
Correct, yes, just another way to, to help deal with blight, or at least a prescription to, to address it.
And if there's any, any gaps or anything in ordinances pertaining to this, then they could make recommendations, just like the planning commission does, uh, when we need, they wanna change something, they can recommend a change in the language or something, so I think it would be useful to have a positive group of people working together, rather than just sitting there complaining about blight.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the ad hoc committee that kind of put this all together and took the time to do that, and I, hopefully, this, this committee here will be, be a good support for us.
Right.
Well, I think they made a good recommendation to establish a commission.
Yeah.
And I think part of the goal, too, is that we have a group that is looking for root cause in a, in a positive way, not with, not with a fist, but with an open hand to see, you know, most blight has a reason behind it, so coming up with a solution that is, is equitable and fair, you know, may have, like I said, you know, it may be an elderly person or a couple, or it may be, you know, somebody with handicaps that is not able to do work or able to afford the requirements. They can reach out and look and see what other organizations may be able to provide them that help. If, if nothing else, even, you know, the, you know, you put it on the list for the big day of service to come in and help the people appropriate. And then the people who are just ignoring it because it's, they can, well, then they get treated a little bit differently, then, then the long arm of the law can do its part. But there's a lot more positive things, I think, can be addressed and pushed forward, and I think that was part of why it, not a blight committee, but something a little bit more positive was put forward to us.
Anybody else?
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Us.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Moving on to new business. Consideration of Local Revenue Sharing Board grant applications. The Local Revenue Sharing Board, LRSB, distributes 2,000, or 2,000, 2% money from the Little Rivers Casino. The deadline for 2022 Cycle One applications is February, March 11th, 2022, at 5:00 p.m. City staff has prepared two grant applications for submission to the Local Revenue Sharing Board. This agenda item will include two separate motions, one for each grant application. We'll take them one at a time. At this time, council could take action to authorize the submission of a grant application to the Local Revenue Sharing Board for the fire department in the amount of $9,317.75 for ESO software.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Are there any questions for ESO software?
Why don't you walk us through this?
Okay. So currently, what we have right now is ESO, it's an electronic platform, we currently use that for our patient care reports on the medical side, for, and it goes to our billing agency. ESO also carries a whole-sided platform for the fire side. Currently, right now, we're using two totally different platforms, so obtaining data and doing, putting in for, whether it's FEMA grants or whatever, we're taking data from this platform, we're adding, adding it to the next platform and coming together. This will put everything on one plate. It'll help out a lot because there's portions of it that extend into the station where we do our truck checks, everything will go more electronically is what the goal will be. It'll handle, um, building inspections for Brent to go out, and he can actually, everything will coordinate right through, right through this programming system. You can actually go in and do ad hoc queries and checks, and for a FEMA grant, for say, you can, it has its own little bracket where you go over, check on it, it compiles all the data for you. So it'll be a great benefit. Currently, using those two different platforms, we also, every time we have a medical call, we also put it into our fire software program, and that goes into the national reporting system. This will do it with, in one entry, so there'll be less redundancy for the guys. The biggest reason we haven't moved forward with it was initial cost and startup. There is always an annual fee for it, which is what we, we currently have one now. This will, just getting over that hurdle, this will cover the initial startup and a year, and then we'll take over from that point. So, any questions?
Will the fee, yeah, sorry, go ahead. I was just gonna say, will the fee be different now that you're using?
It'll be, it'll be increased a little bit, as far as, it's gonna be ballpark about a thousand dollars difference in, increased.
Okay. Yearly?
Yeah, annually, yes.
Did you wanna say something? I'm sorry.
Mark, does this take and, and just stay in-house or report to, does it go to the city base, or?
The only place currently it would get sent to, well, seeing how inspections would work, it could be used throughout the city, in, in reports or anything like that, or anything that we come up with as far as, like, our presentations, or if you're looking for statistics on how many calls we run, we can currently still do that, but we're pulling it from two different areas, so there are a little bit of inaccuracies because we're counting some on one side, and, and then the ESO side is very, very streamlined and smooth, so... But every month, the national, uh, reporting system goes into, uh, the federal level for our, all of our calls that we go in for, and this system would do it automatically for us. So that's one more benefit for it.
Is there a way for this system to, um, be in compliance with HIPAA rules, where names, data like that is not?
Totally is, totally is. Currently, we use that same platform, ESO, for our, our patient care reports. That's totally, it has, has word protected, um, it's, it's HIPAA compliant.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a motion on that?
Yes, we have a motion.
Heather, are you ready to take a call?
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Us.
Motion approved.
Thank you. At this time, council could take action to authorize the submission of a grant application to the Local Revenue Sharing Board for the police department in the amount of $9,394 for a radar trailer. Is anybody from the police department here to talk about that? Oh, Christine.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Please go ahead.
Okay, um, I'll do my best, Chief Glass is under the weather today, so I'm taking his place. We got three bids for the new radar trailer, this was actually the least expensive, it has a lot of good features that we liked, it has red and blue flashing lights, um, it also has a display system with different messages, like, no drinking and driving, no texting and driving, there's numerous ones, I can't name them all. It also has solar and battery power, which leads to longer battery life, and a two-year standard warranty, which we found was common with all bids that we got. Uh, we do think it's very important, it has another feature of logging speed data, which gives us the ability to track problem areas, maybe focus our patrols more on those areas, and certain times of the day, we can better determine that with this radar trailer. The one we currently have is probably 20 years old, it's just not fitting our needs anymore. I know we have upcoming things like the 31 bridge detour coming up, possibly, I think it's important to have that kind of device to help us assist with traffic where we can't be present.
Is it any larger or smaller than the current one that we have?
I believe they're pretty standard in size, I can't give you exactly if, I, I would try to answer that, but judging by the pictures, it's similar in size. There should be a picture.
It was, I just didn't look at the dimensions.
Yeah.
So the other one would be just decommissioned, or what would happen with the other one?
I've heard some talk about possibly offering it to another agency, I'm, I'm not sure exactly where they stand on that.
Can it be programmed, does there's standard language that they, that, that you just pick, you know, from a menu, what you want it to say, like?
I think...
You're going too fast, or slow down?
Yeah, but...
Can you program to say anything different?
I think they have pre-programmed messages, I don't know if it has that capability to choose your messages, I think there were 18 preloaded messages, it's actually on your sheet, on the picture with the trailer on it, it shows you what the preloaded messages are, like, schoolwork, school zone, reduce speed, drive safely, whatever it may be, it, they're, they are preloaded, though, I don't believe you have the capability of changing those.
Okay. I was just curious.
Okay.
Well, you, you hear, well, you, I shouldn't say this, but, um, I heard on the news that, one of the things that the Ukrainians were doing was they were reprogramming some of their street signs that would tell you what street it was, you know, and they would have it programmed to say something different to the Russians coming to town to confuse them.
Oh, gotcha.
So, so that's why I, that, it made me think about that.
It doesn't sound like, and I apologize for not knowing all of the details, I, this was a last-minute thing, so I'm just looking at what I see on the sheet, but it sounds like they are just preprogrammed messages on there.
Okay.
How much do you use something like this, like, like, all the time?
If it's in a good operating condition, which we're, now that ours is getting up there in age, sometimes we have more issues with it, we, I can see us deploying that daily, as long, we have a backup battery, and with the solar and battery power, we can keep the batteries running longer, and we can utilize it a lot more than the current one that we have.
And it lasted 20 years or something, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, this one still is a 64 by 48 LED matrix, uh, can come in black, and white, and amber LEDs.
That might be a little bit larger than the display we have.
That's what they got on this.
Thank you.
Specs, sir.
Well, I think the, the benefit of this one is it actually will tell you when people are breaking that speed barrier at a certain location, so you can set it up on Fifth Street and know when and where the speeding is taking place.
That's so beneficial to us, because as you know, we, we don't know day-to-day when we're busy, when we're not busy, if we, we know when our focus problem area is, and we can assign somebody specifically to that area, that's beneficial to everybody, I think, in the long run.
Okay. I have any more questions, do you? Thank you so much. Roll call.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Us.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of approving a four-year license agreement with RJ2 Associates. RJ2 Associates LLC has requested a place assigned advertising the bluffs on Manistee Lake on city-owned property at the southeast corner of M55 slash East Lake Road, intersection in Manistee Township. The city turn, the city attorney has prepared a four-year lease agreement. The initial annual fee is $600 with a 3% annual escalation, which is in line with other similar license agreements the city has entered into. At this time, city council could take action to approve a license agreement with RJ2 Associates LLC and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. You? Is this in the same, there was an, another sign that was there, same place that the other sign was, there used to be a sign up there, I thought.
You can show the sign off. So it's, it's not in the same place, no, it's a, and I can show, it's at, well, it mentions the 55 and East Lake Road, and I think you can see a rendering there, but really, it's a, they filled out a sign permit from Manistee Township, and really, this license agreement, because of the property owner, uh, this is one of the Renaissance Park properties, um, this'll act as a letter of permission to put the sign up, they'll still have to go through, making sure they comply with the local, um, the MDOT regulations, but, no, it would be a new sign.
Probably the most money we've ever made in Renaissance Park.
I don't have any questions. Anybody have any questions on this sign?
It's, uh, it's not on one of the, the lots that are for sale, is it?
It is.
So what happens if, if we sell that lot?
This lease will terminate.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac. Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of applications to boards and commissions, the city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the compensation commission, harbor commission, historic district commission, the pay commission, and the tree commission. Mayoral and manager appointments require a motion second and council-voted support. Nominations for council appointments do not require a second. After all nominations are made, council votes on the nominees until one nominee receives majority support. The following applications have been received. In the historic district commission, two vacancies, terms ending 2/28/25. Applicants must be city residents, one member is desired, one member is desired who meets professional qualification standards for archaeologist, architect, architectural historian, historian, or historic, or historic architect, council appointment.
I'd like to appoint Dennis Otto, 333 Fifth Street, to the two-year vacancy ending 2/28/25.
Roll call.
Roll call. Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Sorry, I have to ask a clarifying question. So there's two vacancies and we're voting on both, or we're voting...
We'll do one at a time, though.
But there's two vacancies, right?
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Nomination approved.
Thank you.
Hey, I'd like to nominate Ron Hemble, 252 Laid Out Circle.
Roll call.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Nomination approved.
Thank you. Tree commission, two vacancies, terms ending 12/31/22, mayoral appointment. I'd like to appoint Dennis Otto, 333 Fifth Street.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
We need a motion and then a second.
We need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Noticees communications announcement. A report from the Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce Economic Development and the Downtown Development Authority. A regular part of each council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. At this time, Ms. Stacy Bytwork, Mr. Mark Miller, and Ms. Christina Beck...
Byt.
Byt... Byka will report on the activities of the Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce Economic Development and the Downtown Development Authority and respond to any questions the council may have regarding their activities.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having the chamber. I have Christina and Mark here with me, so we're kind of... The three of us will go back and forth on kind of a presentation. It's our annual report, and then we'll dive a little bit deeper on some projects that we're working currently in 2022. So... This is our team, so good teamwork. So Dennis McCarthy is the chair of the Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce Board. We have a very diverse board from all different sectors, and you can see that on the left-hand side, as well as a chamber team. There's four of us, myself included in that. Pretty dynamic team here. We each have different roles within the chamber, and you'll see that come through during the presentation this evening. Myself as the president and CEO, but Christina works with communications and investor relations, and then she's also the point person for DDA. And then Mark is our point person for economic development. And then Carmen Cott is our operations manager, handles our contracts, financials. And then within that, we have different programs that the chamber puts on, so it's kind of a team approach on that and plays into everybody's strengths and who handles what. And then I wanted to point out local and regional and state representation. I do sit on all those different boards and commissions throughout the state and region, so that is putting Manistee County as well as Manistee City in our business community within all those different atmospheres to network and kind of highlight our city and county. So just to let everyone know, the mission of the Chamber of Commerce, this has always been our mission. This is our focus. We want to have these positive impacts on the community as well as ourself as an elite organization in the community. We do have four priority areas of focus. This has been adopted by our board of directors and the business community, which is legislative advocacy, economic development, leadership, and professional development, and then the Manistee Downtown Development Authority. So we're going to focus on those four areas tonight and the key priorities that we're working on within those areas. So legislative advocacy, any lead chamber in the country, that is one of their main priority areas of focus. So we are one of the leading chambers in the state, which I'm very happy to announce. That is a very good thing for Manistee County. We sit as a partner with the Northern Michigan Chamber Alliance, which is a coalition of 16 chambers and economic development organizations in northern Michigan. We have a really good representation with our state legislators, the governor's office, any of the state departments within Lansing. So we have that wide net, and we're advocating for those policy priority areas that you'll see on the right. And then a lot of communication that we do with that, we have quarterly reports that we put out as a chamber, as an alliance, and then we're really working to advocate for basically making business easier for everyone in our community and then growing our community. Our next area of focus is economic development, so Mark is our point person for that. So I'll probably turn it over to Mark to kind of talk about 2021 and a lot of those efforts that you'll see up here, and then some of the efforts that we're working on throughout this year so far.
Good evening, council members. Just want to start out with a quick overview of the contract that we have with the city on economic development, and that'll kind of walk us through some of these projects and the work that we did in 2021. The chamber is the first point of contact for developers and for businesses with this contract. We also work to build relationships with state and regional entities. Stacy was mentioning some of that earlier with the work on advocacy. We also have a program of business retention and expansion visits. That's where we go out and talk to the businesses about what their needs are, if they have any expansion plans, what they want to accomplish, and help them with those needs and those plans. We also, as part of the contract, have a responsibility for marketing and work around the redevelopment-ready community sites. So the priorities that the city council and other entities in the city pick to prioritize, that's part of that contract. And then also, as a deliverable in that contract, to improve the city's job base and to improve the city's tax base. And so that can lead us into a lot of the discussion here on some of the work that we've done on priority sites and on blighted sites in our community. The Northern Hotel was an RRC site. We worked throughout 2021 to try to attract a developer to that site. There is a new owner. Developer is planning on a 15-long-term apartments and a commercial space, which could include restaurants. And so we're working with that developer on his future plans as he is getting going. We also have a developer that is interested in working on plans for the Amor Water Street RRC site. That was an RRC site a cycle or so ago. And so he has plans for a mixed-used building to include some long-term apartments. So that is something that's in the works, and we're working with that developer. We continue to work on the Gateway Project downtown with the tribe and developers. And also, we have done a significant amount of work in 2021 on the Hampton Inn and Suites project, so that will be moving forward very quickly. All of these have or have already improved or will improve the city's job base as well as the tax base. So the Hampton Inn and Suites site, just by virtue of being purchased, improves the property's tax base, which means that there are more opportunities for city services and other things that you can decide where to spend those dollars. We also have been working very diligently on bringing new investment to the area. Part of that is working with MEDC, with our collaboration there. It's important for many projects, including the Gateway Project. So we work with them. We also can bring in programs like Match on Main through the RRC program and work on that grant program that benefits some of our local businesses. The RRC program continues to provide assistance and resources to developers and to the community, and that's important for us to bring in those investments. And we continue to work with and recruit developers for projects, whether it be housing or for other job creation work. You know, currently, as it stands today, I know this is 2022, not 2021, but we have six different developers that we're actively working with now on projects to help us with housing and other things.
Can I interrupt for a minute?
Yes, ma'am.
I want to ask a quick question. I hope you'll let us ask questions as you roll. How do you actually recruit developers?
So we work through our networks, you know, whether we're talking with current developers that lead us to other developers, construction companies that lead us to other developers. We will pick up the phone, start a conversation, start relationships, and, you know, we also can find out that they can... They're coming into town looking at the project. We start to develop those relationships and kind of complete the task of getting them here. And so that's what we're actively doing.
Okay, I understand that part of it, but do you have an actual routine where you're actually saying, "Today, I'm going to concentrate on reaching out to certain developers around Michigan"? I'm just curious. I want to know how this really works.
Well, if we want to... The RRC sites, that's through MEDC, so they already have a list of developers that they work with. So if we have those property sheets for those sites that the city has identified as redevelopment-ready, we do have a list that we are putting those in front of. We will be hopefully hosting a developer day at some point this year, and those sites will be out in front, and then we will target exactly who might fit those sites for what type of development they're doing.
That would be great, because it was successful the other time.
Yeah. And to be quite honest, the advocacy piece for getting connected with other communities, other chamber presidents, other economic development offices, we share a lot of the same people and resources, and hey, they're looking for a site, hey, we have one, and it's all that networking opportunity that we're doing across the state and region. And then same with any legislators that they're, you know, they may know something. And that's why we have a very diverse board of directors, because they also, with their companies or where they're at, they're very well-connected, too. So there's a lot of those conversations that are taking place.
Okay, that helps fill in the gaps a little bit. Thank you.
So working on 2021 business development, we've assisted with small business growth and creating new jobs with these business retention visits. We've worked with Thoroughbred Boat Company at critical points during their startup development. And as we've discussed, many of these retention visits talk about their expansion plans. So we've worked with them directly on getting information, programming, any sorts of grants or anything else that might be available, programs, and deliver that information to them. So that is where we're at with the economic development piece. I guess I'll turn it back to...
I got a question.
Yes.
I can get through it. So your... Eight hundred and ten contacts. What does that include?
The total contacts?
Yeah.
Okay, so if what I count for contacts is a meeting, a phone conversation, or a substantive email where we're providing information to them.
Okay.
So we... I go through every month and add all those things up from, you know, from those three areas. We keep notes or look through emails and make sure that we have enough. And so that basically reflects how many times I'm talking to a developer or a business owner on something substantive.
Okay. But that could be five or six emails or three or four phone calls for the same person? And those would all count as one contact?
Depends on the substance of it and how far apart they are. So I might have five or 10 conversations with the developers of the Hampton Inn and Suites in a particular week, and so we count each one of those.
Okay, so out of 46 business referrals, like how many of those actually turned into something for 2021?
That's a really good question. They don't always pan out. A lot of those are people who come in saying, "I have a business idea. I want to start somewhere. Where do I start?" And we typically send those to the Small Business Development Center so that they can get assistance in developing business plans, seeking out financial assistance, or other things like that.
Okay.
And so that's the number of times I've had somebody call up and say, "I need help with something."
I'm just trying to figure out, like, these numbers, because, I mean, I understand, like, contacts and, like, working through, and, like, some of them don't go anywhere. But if somebody was, like, looking at this and you've got 433 contacts for just downtown, like, people would look at it and say, "Okay, well, you have 400 contacts. Like, why is there not more businesses down there? Why is there not more things coming in?" So I'm just... If you can just, like, elaborate on that a little bit.
Be happy to. And if I can even use an example, one that continues to take a lot of work, and that's the Fracano's Restaurant. There's a good deal of assistance that we're giving to Ted even after he closed and after he made announcements and moved forward, received the Oprah. You know, we have several contacts with Ted a week where we're saying, "Okay, here's what you need to do on a soil erosion permit. Here's what you... Here's where you need to go for this," and try to direct him to resources. Or can... He will call up, or his accountant will call up and say, "I need help with this. I'm running into this." And so that would be an example of the number of times. And it just... It can... And I don't track these individually in terms of projects, but, I mean, you could see that there's a lot of effort being given on a particular project. And so I think that Fracano's and some of the other projects, like the Gateway Project and the Hampton Inn and Suites, those take up a good deal of time, a number of meetings, phone calls, to try to walk them through and to provide assistance.
Wouldn't it make more sense to track it as a one project than... Because if you're like Fracano's, if you're calling the water guy and you're counting that as a contact, like, it looks like there's more than what there actually is. Like, if you just con... If you tracked it as just this certain project and then categorized, you know, how many contacts you had within that project, you know what I mean?
Right.
Because I... I don't know, maybe I'm reading it differently than everybody else, but it looks like there's a huge amount of contacts for downtown, and they're... From, like, the public's view, there's not a lot going on down there. So I just... I feel like that needs to be adjusted a little bit to where...
Sure. So let me try to provide a little bit more context for it. One, in the monthly reports that we provide to you, I have... It was your suggestion on this. Started to put in the numbers of the different types of categories. So two hotel projects, obviously. Five restaurants was the one from the February report, and et cetera, et cetera. And so the different types of projects. But that also includes reaching out and checking in on an existing business. And, you know, that happens quite a bit, where we'll just call up, call a business downtown. "How are things going? What are you seeing? Are there any things... Anything that you need to take a look at?" So we have a lot of those in there, and I think that, you know, we can try to categorize those a little bit, kind of define that a little bit more. But on the flip side of that is that then that would take more time to report on that, and we would reduce the amount of assistance or the amount of time that we're spending working towards our goals.
Okay, I'm going to push you over.
I think that's a really good idea. We could take a look at doing it that way. I think the reason we did it the way we did is to show you guys how much contact we're having with some of the people that are interested in putting a business or expanding. But if we did it by priority project-based, and then we could show you how many contacts we're having with that, that may be something we can consider as a team if we can do that. As far as the small business numbers, there... Once we refer them, those are confidential, so they can't let us know until that business opens. And then they went through some transition with going from Networks Northwest to Grand Valley. So, sorry, the Italian hands are coming out. So they... So that was in a transition, too. But yeah, we'd be happy to do that. And then Christina might elaborate a little bit in her report, but we did develop a survey as a team to go out to all the property owners to see what they're willing to put in their building, if they're willing to put a restaurant in, if they're not. And so we have that data, so maybe that's another thing that we can compile on a spreadsheet to kind of check off, because there is a lot of interest, and these two will tell you a little bit more about that in the community. They're just trying to put that puzzle together and where they can go and how much they're willing to invest, because we are in a historic district downtown, and that takes a lot of investment for some of these older buildings. So trying to find the right developer to come in... So trying to find the right developer to come in and also put a restaurant in, and you know, your return on investment on that. I mean, I'm probably not going to personally write a check if I know that there's not some gain in that. So I think those are some things we need to consider, but I like your idea of that, and we'll take that back to our team and kind of think about that.
Yeah, I just think that the way that it looks right now, it's like there's so many people wanting to invest, and where are they? Like, where did they go? So, and I, I would like to track the, the business referrals and find out like how many of those came together.
Yeah. And, and we could connect with the SBDC to see if they can, but sometimes just know, sometimes those can take two to three years. Because once you have your business plan, your perform on, you have to go through a whole process. So I'd like to see the turnaround in less than a year, but I'm not a patient person, so.
Are you good? I'm good, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So our next priority area, I just want to touch on is leadership and professional development. So that's another area that we really put a lot of focus on. So that top picture, I just want to point out, I want to thank the city for sending Kaylee Owens in the last class from a city employee. It's nice to have her in the class. And then I do, I want to point out, within this program, why we developed that is to get young professionals or people new to the community to get connected right away. So you can learn about all the leadership opportunities, whether it's on a commission or what city council does, county, you know, the county board of commissioners, the treaty commission, I didn't even know about that probably till about two years ago. But some of those things that you start thinking about, and then it also takes a snapshot of your community over nine months. What does education look like in the community? What is healthcare? What does tribal day look like? What does government justice look like? And I think Mayor, you were at our last one and Bill, so I appreciate that. But so trying to get people to understand, you know, what are the challenges we face in the community, or what are the opportunities? And how do you fit into that mix as someone new or within your own company that you can get involved and really move the needle to where this community needs to be to grow additive in the state? So I just want to point out that we've had success, we have three board members on the chamber board that all went through the leadership program, and two of them are on our executive committee today. We've had Tamara DePonyo, Jody Walter, and Annie Jacobson are all on the DDA board for Manistee, and then Jody Walter also sits on the CBB. So she's kind of a prime example that I always use. We were actually sitting in chambers here, and she was like, well, I want to get on the DDA board, how do I do that? And she challenged it, and she figured out a way to get involved, and she's been involved ever since. So that's why we have that program to expose leaders to that. The other thing is we have an ambassador program, so it's kind of our sales team to kind of promote what the chamber's doing. Christina works really well with our chamber ambassadors. And then the last thing that's new this year is a customer service experience program that we're developing, in the works of developing, and Carmen will be the lead on that. It was a grant that we received from Consumers Energy, so we're excited about that, so.
I have a quick question.
Oh, go ahead, me too.
I'll, I'll try to be. How can we help you as far as, we have, you know, as you can see, we have vacancies coming up on our commissions, and how can, I mean, we, we always put everything on our, the front page of our, you know, our website for the city of Manistee, but honestly, in this day and age, I'm not really sure that everybody looks at that, the younger, there's younger people who probably want their information in a different format somehow. How do we get that out there? You've, you've had several years of running these leadership programs. How do we engage those people into maybe thinking about serving on a commission?
I think the exposure to the Government Justice Day, which, you know, we talk about, we talk about the open seats on a lot of these boards, commission committees, what have you, but a lot of it's to the time commitment. If you're trying to attract young professionals, and I mean, Erin probably knows as well as anybody, I'm looking at the time because my little ones are in bed, but you're trying to figure out how, you know, people that are starting their careers, or they have young families, how do they fit on these? And they can give a little more peace of their time. So if there's ways to kind of figure out, you know, different times on things, or we've talked about Zoom meetings, and if that's a whole nother Open Meetings Act thing that we can talk to our legislators about. But those are things that I think if we can continue to try to get that in front and show them the impact they can have on some of these different boards and commissions. And I know Lucas is back there because he's in our leadership program, and their class is really involved in wanting to get involved. And I think you can kick me, but I believe they've made it their own personal goal to get on a committee or a commission after they graduate the program. So that's a really good class that you may have potentially 12 more individuals that are going to be intermixed in what matters to them. So another way, I mean, it's just, you know, sharing, get creative on social media about some of this, because you're right, I don't think a lot of people check the website. Make a TikTok video, I, you know, I don't know. It could be fun.
Well, even if we, the city was able to provide you, say on a monthly basis, or, you know, or when we have vacancies coming up, is there any way you can broadcast that out?
Yeah, I mean, I don't see why we couldn't, you know, we have a list of all the past leadership class too, and, you know, the general membership that we could definitely blast that out, that these are opportunities to get involved in your community. Absolutely, so.
Stacy, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
So on your leadership program, you have, how many people are in a class? Or whatever.
We, it, it fluctuates, but we average around 11, 12.
And where, where are you getting them from?
Like, I mean.
Advertising, something that says, I want to come do this?
Yep, we have kind of our core people that send, I mean, the hospital, the college, you know, they'll send people through every year. The city has been really good about sending people almost every year. And so we target kind of, okay, you know, halfway through the year, hey, do you have anyone you're interested in this? And then it goes out. I mean, Christina does a good job of our network to put it out there when we have openings. I mean, general target would probably be 15 to have, but you look at the last two years with COVID, and we've really had to pivot on a lot of the ways we do some of that, but yeah, that's general.
And I get that you're trying to get the young families and whatever involved, but have we thought about just in general?
Getting people.
Older folk? You know, I just, I just wonder if.
In the leadership program?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's not just, it could be anybody.
Oh.
I mean, I've had people go through the class that have lived here their whole life, and were like, we never even knew the we're was here. Or, you know, you expose them to things that, that really makes them kind of open their eyes to the community as a whole and, and different aspects of it. So yeah, it's not just geared for young people by any means. We say professionals or people, I mean, those are kind of the target, people that are, you know, maybe looking to excel in their own business, or, you know, with their employer, or someone new to the area, like Bill would have been great to be in the, you know, looking at some of that, but yeah.
Okay. All right, I ju, I think that's great. I would love to promote that just in my own little.
Yeah.
Arena for people that, that I think would be really good in different aspects in our community, so.
Awesome, thank you.
It's a cool thing, thanks.
Okay, I'm gonna wrap up my piece, and I think we've had the contract with the DDA for over a year now, so I'm gonna hand that over to Christina, she's the point on that, and she can take it away.
Not all of us were young that went through the leadership program. It was a really great program, and there were so a lot of things about Manistee that I didn't know, and I've been here for 15 years, so it was really eye-opening and to talk to different people in different industries and like even natural resources, that was just a super fun day to be exposed to. So I do think it adds, and I think people then get more in touch with the community, so.
Is it like a once a month thing, or how do you guys do it?
Mm-hmm, for nine months, September through May.
All right.
Yes. So the DDA, this has been a very fun learning experience. There's more to this, as you probably all know, in your first year of council, I feel like I'm in my first year of council in the DDA. Our goals are really to promote economic growth and development, identify, identifiable and attractive downtown, and then strengthen the business and community ownership. We are taking a team approach at the chamber, so while I'm the point, as you can see, in economic development, Mark is the lead there, we did have nine businesses open in downtown Manistee in 2021. One has closed since then, but that building has sold, and another one is moving into that, so hopefully we'll fill their space soon. Also, Mark successfully got the tour boat to relocate here, that has been a really good addition. It's fun out my window to see that depart almost on a daily basis and see all the people on the top deck. So I just think that's a really neat thing for downtown. Merchants have been really excited about promoting that, and just, you know, they get lots of questions. I've tried to connect them with, you know, the boat operator, we've tried to get those hours so that they can get that message out, when you're shopping downtown, what else is there to do? We want them to be those, the customer service of Manistee, and, and talk about other things that they can do while they're here. So it's kind of a neat thing. And then marketing the downtown priority properties, we have developed sheets, like Stacy said, that we pass along to developers, and we all can use those and utilize those as we get contacts or as people are interested.
Are most of those properties already listed with a Realtor?
I believe so. Mark, do you have that answer?
The, some of them are not listed with a Realtor. The only example, it might be the, the Jones property, where they were seeking out an investment partner to redevelop the Jones Dairy Building, 451, 453 River Street. You know, the River Street Station obviously is listed, and let's see, the Amor sign, sign is not, don't believe it is. So I think there's, it's probably about a split between 50/50 on that, in terms of which ones are listed, which ones aren't.
Okay, thanks. We're also really, in the DDA, they're, we're very interested in the, in community development with the dining platforms and social districts. That was, I, I think, a really good experience for last year. The board was very behind, you know, let's figure this out, let's make Manistee a destination. And just adding to that ambiance, we also have, Mark worked with Bill on the EDA grant for the River Walk, we know that attention has been needed there. The DDA has, understands that as well, they're passionate about that. Again, we're, we're still working forward on the bond, we have pretty aggressive goals sometimes. The bond takes a little bit longer to decipher all of those pieces. The, the DDA, if you've followed the notes, they actually have put that to Streetscape to help, you know, sidewalks, curbs, things like that. So over this year, we're actually going to try and get all of those proposals, and then you will see them, so that we have something to present, so we have art boards and things like that, so we can, and potentially go up to the public and get input or whatever those steps may be, but we'll be working closely with Bill on trying to move that forward. Hopefully maybe some trees, some softscaping would be, you know, nice, we have beautiful historic buildings, but, you know, we can really make Manistee just a really quaint destination even more than it is with some of those things. And then the Riverwalk Sculpture Plaza at the college, we're working on that, we actually have a meeting tomorrow between the college, the DDA, and the city, you know, to figure out where that, where those property lines are, whose responsibility is what. So it just, projects takes a little bit longer than I would like, but there's lots of pieces in them, and that's a good thing. It, it takes a lot of people and a lot of input, but I really think that everything is moving forward very nicely at the DDA, and we appreciate council support, and I think we both have forward passions, and, and we just want the best for the city. So that's what I have. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer.
Your communications thing is down here, you said monthly downtown merchants meeting?
Yeah, yep, we've, actually during COVID, we did two a month, we did every other week, the merchants actually requested that. They really wanted a platform to talk amongst themselves, hey, how are you handling masks? How are you doing this? What are you doing with, the lives were a really neat thing, a couple people had started, Denise at Redeem did a great job with that, and then Snyder's started it, and Ideal started it, and they all did great, but they've, they've got ideas from each other, which then enhanced them all. And so those meetings have been a platform for them to have that communication piece. They can't go out of their store and walk, you know, a block down. Sometimes they see each other socially, but it just gives them that platform to do it. So it's a kind of an informal platform. We've also started inviting all of the businesses in the DDA, so if there is, if you do have a business in the DDA and you'd like to come to those meetings, they're on Zoom, we're going to continue them on Zoom, because then people can do them from wherever they're at. So they have been very effective.
And you get good participation?
Sometimes, sometimes not, last time it was six, but a lot of times it's between 15 and 20, which I think is good communication, or good participation for a Zoom meeting.
Right.
We were only getting eight to 10 when it was live. So, you know, you, you, you can only offer it, but the key merchants are the ones that are always participating. They are, they, they seem to want to lead, they seem to want to grow, and they, you know, and they're the most vocal at the meetings. So, you know, and those are your staple stores and, and businesses that have been here a long time, so.
Awesome.
But we'll continue to try and expand, if we get 50, great. Now, if I can teach them all not to talk at once, it'd be awesome. I do it on Zoom too.
How has the social district been going? Are we gonna expand on that?
There has been no talk of expanding the boundaries at this point, but I do know that TJ's is the big winner, they had the most drinks served, because we can, we provide them with the labels for the social district, and they've done about two times more than anyone else. But everybody is reporting that they like the social district from a participating restaurant, and that they've had good feedback from it. So I expect it to be even bigger this year, which is kind of nice, so we're kind of ramping up and getting ready for that summer tourism.
Okay. And then is there any update about the Gateway Project? I know.
So I can provide you with what we're working on with that. I have some, some more details about where we're at with the Gateway Project than I've been able to provide in the past. So the chamber's been actively engaged with the developers on the project, along with key city staff and consultants, so there's been a lot of work here. Some of the progress so far has, or does include, the preliminary architecture and feasibility testing and drawings have been done for future use, so that's checked off. The topography, boundary line surveys, site engineering, including soil borings, et cetera, that's all been compiled. There's a full environmental analysis that's been completed. Eagle has awarded, as you know, a 1.5 million in site cleanup. That is on top of the 240,000 from MEDC for support to Little River Holdings. That was finally received in January of 2022, so that's been able to be implemented. The property has had water, gas connections addressed, so demolition can proceed. And then this, and this is also news here, that, and a memorandum of understanding was signed with 6PM Hospitality Group as the new development partner. So Little River Holdings and 6PM, the same group that's doing the Hampton Inn and Suites, are now going to be working on the Gateway Project. Now, some of the work that we're working on right now, professional estimators have completed their cost estimations several weeks ago for the overall cost of the project. MEDC pro formas are nearly complete, that helps with grants and other sorts of assistance that MEDC will need to check off on, including the brownfields work. A hotel brand and a specific hotel line have been identified for the project, and negotiations are ongoing with that brand for monetary support. So those negotiations might actually help out with the overall project. And then official demolition work plans have been approved by Eagle and the city with approval for the start of demolition to start shortly. And then utility rerouting is also in process. So all of these things we've been talking about on a twice a month basis, working with these developers, and, and so that's, that's the update, that's more than we've provided for you in the past, but working with 6PM Hospitality, we've been checking through all of these steps. So thank you for the question.
When was that memorandum, that letter, signed?
That's a really good question. I actually cannot answer that.
But you know that it has been?
It has been signed.
Okay.
I'll just add that the Brownfield, or local Brownfield Authority is looking at doing a local-only Brownfield for reimbursing the demo to get that moving along. We've been having a lot of meetings with Tom St. Das, he's very eager to get this started, so appreciate Ed's work on that. And so they're looking at April, I believe, to get that going, and probably fall or October is kind of the tentative breaking ground, but fingers crossed, it's, but like you said, we're meeting twice a month to go over this and keep it on track.
Okay. Nice presentation.
Thank you. We just want to thank you on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, our Board of Directors, and the team behind me and Carmen. Appreciate my team and everything they have done for this community, as well as you all as leaders, to have your support, looking at the future of where we want to take this community. So just in a quick little plug, we took a little trip down to Muskegan, so I don't know if anybody's been watching what they're doing with housing, but I would highly encourage you to look at what they're doing. They're very aggressive in a positive way, so I think we have some similarities, that we have some opportunities that we could look at too. that we could look at too, to solve the housing challenge in Manistee County. So with that, I just want to thank all of you and appreciate your support. And as always, feel free to get ahold of us if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Now it's time for concerns and comment, citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comment, limited to five minutes. Letters to the council will not be publicly read. Do we have anybody that would like to speak? Why don't you step up? And we need your name and address.
Thank you. Hi, everyone.
What's your name and address?
Excuse me, Jen Teller, 712 Harbor Drive.
Thank you.
Glad to see everybody's here and doing well. Just a few comments before I actually talk about what I came to talk about. Just as, I've tried several times to listen to DDA meetings online and I've made comments there about, I cannot hear it. There's something about the room that they're in that the microphones are not picking up what people are saying. There, one side where the camera's up here and people are over here, they're talking, you know, to the, to the chair and it's just not picking up. It's very difficult to even lip read some, you know, the comments there. So I would just like to encourage the DDA, when you meet, either to get individual microphones or to have that tuned up so that we could hear better. So I appreciate that. I wanted to mention too, asking for a person that could grant, write grants for the city. Someone that you hire that might be able to take a percentage of whatever money you get for whatever project you're writing the grant for. There are so many grants out there. And I was just listening to the Parks Commission and they're like, well, who do we get to write this stuff? You know, and it's like, well, nobody knows. Nobody wants to jump in to do it because they've never done it before. So just as a thought, perhaps that could be something that the city could, you know, think about doing. That person could write grants for all the different commissions and whatever, you know, you need grants for. With that in mind, I'd like to suggest perhaps a combination of commissions. Because you've been talking about, you know, you've been saying about how difficult it is sometimes to get people to come and serve on commissions and boards. And the two that I was thinking about was the Tree Commission and the Parks Commission. The only reason that there is a Tree Commission is for them to be able to become a Tree City USA program. And they needed to have a board, a Tree Commission, along with three other items that they needed to do. And when you look at what the Tree Commission actually does, it's not going to take up a whole lot of extra time for the Parks Commission to address whatever they need to do for the Tree Commission, which is basically they decide, well, who gets a limb trim or who, who gets a tree cut down? You know, what are the issues there? So I think that combining those two could really bring the members in that you need to have, just as a thought. I'd like to suggest too, that Manistee really focus on keeping the downtown really clean, almost spotless. When we were working on Manistee Proud and doing the River Walk there, we walked through town and it's amazing the amount of cigarette butts that accumulate in the seams and in the cracks of the sidewalks downtown. In the summer, when there's lots of people walking around, it's dirty. It doesn't look good. And we did three cleanups in one week. You would not believe the amount that shows up, even in two to three days later. Three cleanups before the Labor Fest. And I'm like, wow. And what it is, it's the style of the sidewalks that we're using. You know, they're using those big squares and it leaves the cracks and that's where they are. They're right there for people to see. So I'm just thinking, maybe a different style when you go to redo the downtown and that type of thing, just to rethink how you can keep the downtown cleaner. Because people look at that and they make a determination as to, you know, it's just, when you sit down on some of the benches, just look down. It's nasty. So I'm suggesting, you know, that we need somebody that will regularly get downtown and clean it up, along with trash that accumulates, especially with the social downtown that you have too. Smoke-free in Manistee, boy, that is, that is something that we really need to consider, especially for our parks and our playgrounds. We know how bad it is for us to be smoking, for us to be vaping, for us to be chewing tobacco. We know what it causes. It's cancer, it's emphysema. It's all kinds of diseases. And when we're on the beach and there's people smoking on the sand and you're on your blanket and they're on their blanket, what do you do? What if you have a handicap person with you or someone that already has emphysema and the smoke is?
Mrs. Teller, your five minutes is up.
Oh, okay.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
Your five minutes is up.
Yeah, all right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. The Parks Commission is doing a great job. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Mrs. Teller. Anybody else?
Even. My name is Patrick Wilson. I actually live in Bear Lake, but 307 Fourth Street is my address. I wanted to actually make a formal apologies for my actions when I called dispatch for the city police. I wanted to make sure that they knew that I'm only trying to be, I am frustrated, concerned and passionate about what's going on in my community. I don't want to be rude or condescending to the people who are trying to help other people. Kind of what happened was my call to city dispatch was in line and confirming and kind of the current direction of where Manistee is going, especially with their, like you said, engaging and getting people to do things. However, my network of people is actually very frustrating and how you say, they're a team of degenerates. But they, they'll come around, they want to be involved, they don't know how to be involved. They're like little babies, kind of lost. So I just wanted to make sure I made a formal apology to dispatch of the Manistee City Police because of my words and my actions. It's not to be rude or condescending. It is just because I want things to be taken care of and I want people to hear what I'm trying to say and what I'm trying to do. And so, and thank you everyone for hearing my voice. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else? Seeing none. Officials on staff. Mr. Gamble?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. The North River Walk, the MDNR grant applications due April 1st. So we'll have the public hearing and also the request for approval of that on the 15th of March. This is kind of a council meeting start quick this month since we have this first one on the first. And I just wanted to thank the Chamber. Stacy organized a trip to Muskegan to meet with the city manager down there. And they definitely did have an aggressive approach with housing, which sounded like they built nine homes with city funds and sold them and they have kind of been building on parking lot. I mean, it was kind of neat to see. We've been talking a lot about housing since I've been here and I was kind of thinking about rehabbing foreclosed homes. But they definitely took it up a notch and I think there's some things we can, can learn from them. So that was a very fruitful visit. I appreciate the Chamber organizing that. And yeah, that's it for now. Thank you.
Mr. Saylor?
Nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
Heather?
Nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
Boy. Mr. Bradford? Chief Cameron?
Nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
Lucas Richardson, do you have anything? I figured you might. You're the one person we have to come Spicer.
I guess I should come up here and talk about the leadership group since Stacy mentioned that I'm in the leadership group. If you are not aware, right now we are advertising for projects for the big day of survey, which is going to happen on June 11th. So the projects that we are trying to obtain are from nonprofit organizations that need some assistance with a project that they might not be able to do and they could use a lot of volunteers or funding. So right now, on the Chamber website, you can find that application if you know anybody that would want to fill that out. And also on the Chamber website, there's the Google form to volunteer or to donate if you're interested. So that's all I had.
Do you have any updates from Spicer that you would like to share?
No, not at this time.
Quincy, Cleveland. We got two bids on Quincy, Cleveland that came just a little bit above the estimate, right?
Yes, we just got the bid. Bid opening was last week for the Quincy, Cleveland project. We received two bids. I think that's going to be on the next council or the following, I believe, agenda for that. And then currently still designing 12th Street Memorial Drive.
Thank you.
Sergeant, good speed. Would you like to speak on behalf of the Police Department, any of these? Did I get everybody? Oh, Zach. He hides in the back. You know, he does that to me every meeting. Zach, would you like to come forward and make a few comments about your area?
So the only update I have for you guys is that I'll actually be leaving Manistee County. I just recently accepted a position with the city of Potoski. So it's likely this will be my last council meeting. So it's been a pleasure working with you guys. I appreciate all the support. But it's time for old Z to get moving.
Well, I wish you good luck and good fortune and we'll miss you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for all the work that you've done. I know you've had some really late nights. Appreciate it.
Happy to do it.
Ah, let's see, who will I start with? How about Erin?
I was just going to congratulate Zach. I just saw the news feed, so.
Mr. Kowalski?
I was going to say thanks, Zach. Heard the talking, but we did good. Mr. Bradford, we do have a grant writer, don't we?
Oh, did I?
No, the city doesn't have a grant writer. We kind of all share responsibilities in managing grants and Spicer and all sorts like that. Do you think the county budgeted for a grant writer in their last budget, I don't know if that would be?
Thank you.
Ms. Lundberg?
I don't have anything. I'm extremely not happy that Zach is leaving. Like, I'm very devastated by that right now because I didn't know until just now. I'm happy for you and I'm sad for myself because you answer all my questions. And then I just, I had a question about the, I think it's actually for you, George, for the blight ordinance. I can't remember, like, I'll have to go back and read it, but I think that the way that it, the way that it works is they get like a ticket and they have so much time. And then if they don't pay it, it goes to, does it go to?
There's, yeah, two stages to it. We eliminated the, the requirement to send out a letter just because what we were finding is that the city police have so much contact before any ticket is issued that that seemed like an unnecessary step. But the, the process now is there's something called a notice of violation that's sent out. And it's similar to a parking ticket in that it's all held, handled internally here at City Hall. So if someone gets that ticket, it's a fine and they're, they're to come into City Hall and pay the fine. If that process doesn't work in correcting the problem, then the next stage is issuing an actual civil infraction citation, which is a ticket that goes into district court where we'd have a hearing and then I'm involved and we're asking the judge to not only potentially at least assess fines and costs, but also order the cleanup of the property.
Okay. And we can't, we can't get around that stuff, right? I just, I feel like in talking to some of the police officers, like they're sick of reporting blight because it's taking, I mean, it's taking a lot of time and resources from them to have to go to court and, you know.
Yeah, we don't have that many court cases. I don't know where the complaint comes, but we don't have a whole lot of court cases. There, there is a process under our ordinances. We've had very old ordinances that allowed counsel to, to order some action to be taken. My view always was that that doesn't afford sufficient due process to the property owner. My view is that having it go to court and having a judge make the determination of whether they're in violation was the better route for those people, gives them their day in court and their ability to contest something. But I really, I don't think I've encountered too much of a problem with the court proceeding. We have to follow up then though, too. Once the judge orders the property to be cleaned up, we had a meeting on Friday with Bill, myself and Josh Glass. We've got a couple of properties that they haven't completed the process yet and we have to take it to the next step, which is probably going back to court, requesting a show cause order on potentially contempt for the person not complying with the court order, so.
So can we, can we look at the ordinance again and just like see if we have to like revamp? I know that we can't do certain things, but I mean.
Well, the civil infraction citation is, I mean, that's our remedy. And so the ticket's issued, we have a court hearing within two weeks and the judge will make a determination. Now, we've had some delays during COVID where those things got put off and, you know, there were higher priorities that the court addressed. And so we had some civil infraction cases that lasted several months before we got into court. But for the most part, those happened relatively quickly.
Well, I'm just wondering if we just take a look at it and, you know, figure out if we have to like bump up the amount of the ticket or something? Because I, I feel like people are not taking this seriously with the blight. Like, they're just like, eh, I'll get a ticket, I might get a ticket.
We discussed upping the frequency too, because technically you couldn't ticket every day. Or we talked about ticketing every week if it's not resolved.
Well, because like how they do the odd even parking, because I didn't pay attention a couple of weeks ago and I got a ticket and it was, it's $40. And then if you don't pay it at a certain time, like there's fees. Is that the same thing with a blight ticket or is it just the straight amount?
Yeah, we, we had that discussion. You know, what we're looking for is not so much fines, but compliance. But for some people, maybe hitting with the fines is the, is the best remedy for us. And so we talked, we have a couple of blight cases that I think council is probably familiar with, that if the property doesn't get addressed, the next step for us is likely to issue a ticket, maybe one ticket a week until it gets, until we get compliance. And you can go in and you can get fines and costs on each one of those tickets. So yeah, that's, that's one of the avenues that we've talked about and probably will be pursuing, so.
Okay. I would actually like to put that on a work session and, and take a look at the whole ordinance again and see if we need to correct some things.
I'll put that on.
What is the first time you get a ticket? What's the first ticket cost?
Well, the, the notice of violation that goes to City Hall, we upped the fines dramatically because I, I thought that that was maybe a way to get compliance. And so the first offense is $250. Second offense is $500. Now, when we go to court, it's not the same schedule because that's sort of up to the judge's discretion as to what he might impose. And I think that all depends on a case by case basis. Sometimes the judge will look at something, I think, and sees, you know, a blatant refusal to comply and he's probably going to hit them a little harder than maybe somebody that's trying to correct the problem. And in that case, maybe they get a little bit more of a break on the fine and cost.
Mr. Schmatsky?
I just wanted to, to say that I, I really think that our Chamber of Commerce overall has been doing an amazing job. I, and I just look back when I moved back here six years ago and, you know, River Street had over 30 vacancies when I first came to Manistee. And now I'm guessing it's maybe a dozen. And, and some of those are under development. So that's, that's in itself is a big, but the biggest thing I noticed is the fact that we now have open communication that I didn't see five and six years ago. The, the Chamber communicates with the DDA and before they were two completely separate entities with a wall between them. And the wall is gone and I think that has made a lot of progress. a wall between them. And the wall is gone and I think that has made a lot of progress. I think a lot of progress downtown, but I think it's also done a lot for the community at large. So again, I, I think, you know, again, there's always more that can be done and, you know, there's always improvements. But overall, I think that we've, we've really made a lot of progress in the last five years.
Okay. I want to speak a little bit about ad hoc committees. There's only two people I see in, in this room that have actually been on one. And it's Ed Bradford and myself, the street ad hoc committee. Remember that, Ed?
Yes.
How long were those meetings? Sometimes they were brutally long, like-
We were a while.
Yeah, between two and three hours. It's a very, it was a very sensitive area of the city that we had to discuss. And I think that lasted well over six months, maybe seven or eight months before that committee finally was closed down. Ad hoc committees are, you take a, you take a, a melting pot of people within the city and you're really starting from ground zero. You're really starting from, how do we define this problem? What is, what are we trying to, what are we trying to accomplish? It's, but it's, it's really a learning curve for most people to understand all the facets of what the problem is and what are the available solutions out there are. So I'm really very grateful to the ad hoc committee that was on blight because I know they started at ground zero. And I know Mr. Grabowski's wife did an excellent job surveying on that. She was quite, quite vocal and quite involved. And I know you attended most of those meetings. So they are, they are challenging. But the nice thing about ad hoc committees, if you happen to be on one, there's going to be an end date because your job is to bring a recommendation to city council with a report. And it's always good when they end, but it's a challenging position. And I think the commission is going to be happy that they had an ad hoc committee look at this problem before it was handed off to them. And I think it's a very positive approach. I like the idea of, we're going to be talking about different methods that we can help them restore their properties and reach out to different agencies that are going to help, you know, with the financing. So I'm very pleased with it. And I, I just want to also thank the chamber for coming forward and giving a presentation tonight. It's always nice to hear what you're doing and to be able to ask questions to other players. So that's about it. Sure.
Chief, fire chief, what are we going to do with that house on Second Street between Sycamore and Maple? It has that fire going all the time. I know when I went to some plays at the Rams last year and I don't know what's been going on over the winter, but I mean, they have that fire going and kids running all over the place. And I know they've been talked to before. Is this one that Mr. Saylor's talking about?
I don't believe so. No. We have, have not had any complaints recently. You know, we've addressed and had them change up their fire pits so that it was enclosed and contained. But I, I can say that we have not had a complaint call there within the past six months or so.
Over the winter, I know that.
It slows down technically over winter months as well. Years past, it's been throughout the entire year. So it's, but we haven't had any complaints recently. So.
There's not a, there's not a requirement from, like how far that fire pit's got to be from the house and the sidewalk?
There is. Depending on what type of fire pit it is, we have a flyer that we take out. We've walked over there and discussed it, showed it to them. As far as the size of pit, if it's contained or it's a commercial, it can be closer, somewhat like a grill. And he fits within those requirements. When he had an open pit, he was close to the sidewalk. There was, there was a lot of discussion there as far as people passing by and the safety there. So we had him, he, he agreed to kind of tone it down and close the pit. So currently he's been following the standards. I can get you also a copy of that as well if you'd like. I can email that out if you'd like. That shows the actual burning permits. Open pits are 25 feet from structures and any side fences where you start to get smaller down to the 15-foot ranges when you have them enclosed and contained and a screen cover.
We'll keep an eye on it.
I'll get that out to you as well.
Thank you.
Then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.